All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to our District Two L.A. City Council Forum. We're really excited to have you all here. We have two incredible candidates, Adrian Nazarian and Gillian Burgos. We're going to hear their perspectives on the issues, and it's been a really great time. And then we have lunch rate after at 12:00, and then the next, we have a deep dive in rent control at 12:30. And I'll turn it over to our moderator, Rita Zerwin, to take it away.
Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Member District Two Candidate Forum. I'm Rita Zorn, and I'll be the moderator for today's candidate forum. The League's mission is to make democracy work for all by building a community of engaged and informed voters. This candidate forum is being streamed live on Zoom, thanks Denise and George, and the recording will be available on the League of Women Voters of Greater Los Angeles's YouTube channel at LWVGLA. Today's candidate forum rules call for stability on the part of both candidates and the audience. The hallmark of democracy is the willingness of our community to treat each other with courtesy and respect. It's in that spirit that we're here to engage in a vital part of our democratic process, a civilized discussion of the important issues that confront our communities. Attacks of a personal nature, including private matters having no bearing on a candidate's public persona or ability to perform the duties of the office in a competent ethical manner, will not be tolerated. If a candidate makes a personal attack during his or her remarks, the time required for me to interrupt the candidate and remind him of the rule will be taken from his or her own speaking time. Here's an overview of this candidate forum and the rules which have been agreed to by the candidates. The candidates will speak in order based on the alphabet lottery conducted by the California State Secretary of State, which decides the ballot order. Each candidate will be called upon by the moderator. During their responses, our timekeepers will alert candidates to the time remaining with signs of one minute, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and then a stop sign when they are out of order, when they're out of time. Any candidate that goes over the time limit will be interrupted by me and may be muted. The first question will be addressed to candidate number one, who will have two minutes to respond. Candidate two will then have one minute to respond to the same question. The second question will be addressed to candidate two, who will have two minutes to respond, followed by a one-minute response by candidate one. The same process will be followed for all 10 questions, so that each candidate will have the opportunity to go first for an equal number of questions. Following the question period, the candidates will be given two minutes each for a closing statement. There will be no rebuttals. The final two questions will come from the audience. To submit your questions for the candidates, please raise your hand, and the runners circulating through the room will get you a card and pencil. Questions will only be collected during the first 30 minutes of this forum until 11:30. The questions will be sorted and may be edited or combined together for clarity and brevity. Due to time limitations, not every question may be used. The following rules apply to all questions submitted by the audience. Only written questions will be accepted. They must be in the form of a question, not a statement. Questions must deal with the issues of this election. No personal references or attacks will be allowed. All submitted questions, asked or not, remain the property of the League of Women Voters. They are never given to the press or third parties and will be destroyed after the forum. At the end of the question period, the candidates will have two minutes each to give a closing statement. The order for closing statements was decided before the forum by a drawing of numbers. Please note there's no campaign activity allowed in the room, including distribution of flyers, display on clothing, posters, or buttons. We also ask that the audience focus on listening and refrain from applauding or responding to the candidate's ideas. As part of the student honor code, we ask that students turn off or silence their cell phones to show respect for the candidates and audience members. Additionally, unauthorized recording of this forum is strictly prohibited. Anyone observed recording may be asked to leave. If a candidate's supporters are disruptive during another candidate's remarks, the other candidate will be given additional time to compensate for the interruption. Now, I would like to introduce our candidates for Council District Two by ballot order. Gillian Burgos and Adrian Nazarian. The questions for today's forum have been co-created by students of Pierce College and the League of Women Voters. The candidates have not seen the questions and will be hearing them for the first time. So, let's get started. Question number one, this question will be directed first to Ms. Burgos. What role, if any, do you feel the city council should have in advocating, recommending, or enacting laws relative to people exercising their free speech rights to protest on city streets or college campuses? Or are these matters that should be under the purview of the police or campus governments? Ms. Burgos, your two-minute response, please.
I deeply believe in the right to freedom of speech. Through protests, we have gained the right to vote as women. We have gained the right to being seen as citizens, as a black person, and having, you know, the civil rights era was born out of free speech. The bringing up Black Lives Matter came out of protests and free speech. And so, I do believe that city council should advocate and protect the right to free speech. We do need to make sure that both sides are heard, though, especially in issues where people have immense feelings, that where their families are tied to it, where their livelihoods are tied to it, where their lives are tied to it. We must hear both sides of it. And, you know, I think that we can have community mediators get involved and make sure that any type of protest is, you know, makes, takes both sides into account, allows both sides to have the issue, the issue seen and have themselves be heard. When it comes to violence, we do, at that point, need to bring in police. But I think that that's a really extreme measure, and it doesn't normally happen. I think that people, if they feel heard, if we make that space for them, if we have community advocates advocating and making sure that there are rules to a protest, and we have it stipulated that you can be here at this time, and it cannot escalate into any version of violence whatsoever, that everybody will feel heard and that we'll get to hear both sides of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nazarian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you, Rita, and thank you for the very insightful question. First and foremost, First Amendment of the United States protects free speech. And so, at every level of government, below the federal government, we need to do everything we can to uphold the freedoms protected under the First Amendment. One. Two, think about protest as a form of communication. Not everyone knows exactly how to get the attention of decision-makers. So, how you need to do it sometimes is to maybe resort to protesting. That energy needs to be translated into a form of communication, so that then decision-makers can look, assess, and see how laws need to be changed to better address the needs. We evolve over time. Human nature evolves. Laws need to change. And so, free speech should always be protected to allow people the avenue to be able to change laws as well. Thank you.
The next question is directed first to Mr. Nazarian. Measure DD on the ballot this year would establish an independent redistricting commission, which would be empowered to make final decisions on city council district boundaries without the involvement of the city council or mayor. Are you in favor or opposed to this measure, and why or why not? And if the measure is not approved, what recommendations would you make to ensure that the setting of district boundaries effectively represents the citizens of Los Angeles? And if it passes, what obstacles do you receive to its implementation, such as funding? Mr. Nazarian, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you again so much for a great question. I 100% support independent redistricting. I think it's actually been very absurd that up until now, we've allowed elected officials to figure out how they want their districts to look, which means essentially what we've been saying is elected officials choose who you want to represent and cut it out the way you want. Instead of saying, wait a second, we got to empower the voters to figure out who they want to choose to represent them. So, we've had it backwards for a very long time. And I say this with a great deal of conviction, because the state, as you know, has an independent redistricting process. And I was a state legislator for the last 10 years. The reason why I ended up not running for my last term of office is because the redistricting process cut apart my district, the district that I had represented, into three different areas. And so, I was left with the choice of either running against one of my colleagues to serve that last two years, or, you know, focusing on city, because I always wanted to represent the city. I always wanted to do work at the city level. Local level is where you make the most profound impact. So, I decided to do, not run for the last term, not run against the colleague, and instead focus my efforts on city councils. So, I felt the change on my own skin, and I would still 100% support it. And if it should not pass, I'd be happy to actually put it back on the ballot measure and help finance it to get it passed.
Thank you. Ms. Burgos, your one-minute response, please.
Well, the issue of independent redistricting is one of the reasons why I decided to run for this office, because our district, if you remember the L.A. Fed tapes, it was a scandal in 2022 where three council members and the head of the L.A. Fed colluded to gerrymander this district. So, they colluded to cut out this district for, you know, for their purposes and for their anointed people, and to hurt Councilmember Nithya Raman. So, this was to disenfranchise 138,000 voters before they ever received their ballots, to hurt black and brown communities, to hurt renters. And it's time to say that this needs to be taken out of city council's hands. They should not be able to say who their constituents are. It should totally be independent and funded probably by, obviously by the city with a volunteer base, kind of similar to the neighborhood council system.
Thank you. Excuse me. This next question is directed first to Ms. Burgos. Measure ER on this year's ballot would establish minimum annual budget for the City Ethics Commission, allow the commission to obtain outside counsel, impose additional qualification requirements on commission members, require the city council to hold a public hearing on commission proposals, and increase penalties for violations of city laws, among other things. Do you feel this measure, if passed, would be sufficient to address some of the serious ethics violations we've witnessed in the past few years? If not, what additional measures would you propose? Ms. Burgos, your two-minute response, please.
I think that we've seen our city council and our city government has been affected by a lot of corruption. In the past four years, we have had four council members who have been indicted. And it's disgraceful. I mean, as Los Angeles, as the second-largest city in the world, we are also underrepresented. And we are looking to these city council members, they're basically mayors and working for 264,000 constituents. The Ethics Commission is highly important. The appointments of the Ethics Commission has showed that they have been skewed to favor certain city council members and to hurt other public officials. Jamie York was one of the most ethical people who should have been appointed to the Ethics Commission and was not because of backroom deals. And so, we need to end this. We need to make sure that we properly fund it and that we take any dirty games out of politics. You know, it should really be all about the people. It's, our city council should be about serving the people of this community, and they have been ignored for far too long. This is why we have an increase in homelessness. This is why we have not enough housing. And this is why we have found ourselves in the budget deficit that we are in, because we have not been sticking by and being ethical.
Thank you. Mr. Nazarian, your one-minute response, please.
So, I want all of you here to feel very empowered as decision-makers, and think about this for a minute. How absurd is it that we have had an Ethics Department Commission? It's an independent commission that has its own decision-makers appointed, right? How can we have this in place for several decades, yet just in the last five years have three council members, 20% of the body of the city council, 20% of the legislative body, go to prison? How absurd is that? Is the Ethics Commission doing its job or not? Now, what we really need to look at are the tenants of whether or not it can do the work that it's mission to do. Does it get enough funding? Are the, is the funding string strung by the council members who don't want it to be funded so that it doesn't do the things that it needs to be doing? Is it just reviewing during the election or actually keeping
Thank you, Mr. Nazarian.
an oversight over people?
The next question is directed first to Mr. Nazarian. Proposition 33 would effectively repeal the 1995 Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act, which limited the ability of local governments from controlling rental rates of single-family homes, housing built after February 1st, 1995, or for new tenants. If this proposition passes, do you believe that the city council should use its authority to modify its current rent control ordinances, and if so, how? Mr. Nazarian, your two-minute response, please.
Very much, Rita. I very much support Proposition 33. I think you cannot keep a chokehold through laws on the ability of meeting the needs of individuals. That was a backstop, a fake backstop that was being utilized to keep control over the needs of where cities needed to go. Some cities, like Beverly Hills, may not necessarily, I'm just throwing out an arbitrary, or San Marino, may not necessarily need to enact rent control. But most other places, like Los Angeles, like Glendale, like Burbank, at least Los Angeles had the RS of Rent Stabilization Ordinance, which allowed it between 3% to 5% increase. I would talk to individuals in Glendale, elderly, fixed, on fixed income, who would tell me that their rent on two-bedroom apartment went from 2,400 to 3,600. That is a 50% income increase. That's absurd. Imagine that being your grandparents or your parents. How would you be able to help them defray that cost? Luckily, they were able to find something. If not, in most cases, they would become homeless. That's why the aging population in California is the fastest-growing homeless population right now. And if we don't address these issues through measures like Prop 33, then we're going to have a bigger problem on our hands. And how would I, if it passes, how would I make sure that the city is changing its own? L.A. City's rent control, rent stabilization has actually worked well. 3% increase, that's all that it allows for. And then an additional 2% on utilities. Usually, those are not attributed. It's 3%. So, I think that's workable.
Thank you. Ms. Burgos, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you for this. As a lifelong renter, I have seen rents go up astronomically. My first apartment was 1,300. That same apartment now is almost $3,000. What am I getting more for that apartment? So, I think we need to protect renters. People should be able to afford rent, their groceries, and a right to life. I'm on a minimum-wage job. It's gotten astronomical. We need to vote yes for Prop 33 to end Costa-Hawkins, which has really stagnated where housing can be built. 73% of our land is single-family zoning. We need to be able to build there. We shouldn't be just relegated to a certain area. So, we also need to change zoning laws to support this and allow mixed-use construction. But the biggest thing is we have to protect renters. We have to enact Tahoe 2.0. And Prop 33 is a useful tool to getting us to having municipalities decide where rent control can be. Currently, it's only buildings that are made before 1995. And that's just, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burgos. But you'll get an opportunity to expand on your answer, because this next question is directed to Ms. Burgos. One reason for the high number of unhoused community members in Los Angeles is the lack of affordable housing. To increase housing density, would you allow for single-family home areas to be rezoned? In addition, or instead of rezoning, what other practical solutions would you propose to address our housing shortage? Ms. Burgos, your two-minute response, please.
Absolutely. So, we are, we know we're in a housing crisis, and our current city council hasn't done much to help us get out of it. We are behind, if we were to keep up with the housing element, we are behind in our district, 4,400 units from 2018 to 2024. In addition, in order to keep up with the housing element and the creation of affordable housing, we would need to create 1,533 additional units per year. That's a lot of catching up to do. This is why we are having so much homelessness and housing instability. In our district, also, our current council member has a stipulation where you have to be on record for six months before you will receive services. That is six months of being out on the street, waiting, hoping somebody's going to care about you. We are hurting people by doing that. We are causing trauma. So, what we need to do is, we need to go ahead and do everything we can to create housing. That's changing zoning laws. Yes, we need, the fact is, we do need to use R1 zoning, which is single-family zoning. But don't worry, we can still keep our neighborhoods, you know, pristine the way we want them, with duplexes, with triplexes, with creative housing, with bungalow courtyards. We don't have to have super-tall apartment buildings everywhere. But the thing is, is that we just need to build, because we are so far behind. And we also need to repeal the use of RealPage. The city council in San Francisco repealed that. We need to do that, to do that here in L.A. City Council. That allows corporate landlords, it tells them how much that they can get away with charging for rents, and that allows them to, you know, go ahead and collude to charge astronomical rents, and that are pricing people out further and further out of our district. Thank you.
Mr. Nazarian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. And there's so much to talk about here. And there's so much information that comes out that unfortunately sometimes is not true also. But I can't focus on that, given that it's only 60 seconds. So, let me just share something with you. In order to have a good middle class, you need to provide mixed housing opportunities. When I came out of college, I rented. Second place was a rental. Third place was a rental. I finally was able to buy a property. So, you know, you have to grow through the steps, and that's what the growth of the middle class allows. In order to grow over time and to be able to invest and build in equity, what we shouldn't do is allow equity firms to buy single-family properties from under us, because then there are less homes to be able to purchase. I'm very supportive of making, of rezoning transitional areas, not inside the pockets. Oh, there should be homes, there should be duplexes, fourplexes, and triplexes. Thank you.
The next question will be directed first to Mr. Nazarian. A large number of the unhoused are people with mental health and substance abuse issues. What proposal would you put forth to address the housing and support of these people, and how should they be funded? Mr. Nazarian, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you, Rita. So, first of all, federal government has a role in all of this. When you have roughly between 20% to 30%, according to data coming out of LOSA, of homeless individuals coming from out of state, and according to fire and police departments, maybe even higher, when you look at that data, you realize, given the elements also that people battle with, if you're homeless, happen to be homeless in Boston or Michigan, you're going to want to come to a warmer climate. And if that's the case, we need to be ready to figure out how to absorb that. Absorbing that means working with the federal government, because at this point, right now, Los Angeles, the greater Los Angeles area houses roughly, not houses, has about a quarter of the entire country's homeless population. If that's the case, then the federal government needs to step in and help us, help the county and the city. The city is responsible for providing the shelters and the beds. The county is responsible for providing the wraparound services. We've gone about this entirely the wrong way, because for the last 60, 70 years, we have not made the appropriate investments in knowing how to even deal
Oh, it's on right now.
homeless situation. Now that it's become a crisis, now we're trying to figure it out. And it's a little too little, too late. It's going to take a lot of money to be able to address this. And building supportive homes, transitional homes, is just the first step. Then it's about evaluating what the needs are and providing the wraparound services to individuals, so that they can have a modicum of a decent living. And don't forget, a lot, roughly 35% or maybe more of the homeless population right now is not going to be able to work because of their chronic homelessness circumstance over the past years.
Ms. Burgos, your one-minute response, please.
Yes. So, the city hasn't done enough to support our unhoused population. In our district, we only had a 2% reduction in homelessness in this past year. We were in the bottom three of all districts, whereas that's literally seven people that we housed. So, again, we don't have a mental health department in the city, but we do need to partner up with our county and our state partners and our federal partners. Actually, most people who fall into homelessness live in our city and have lived in our city for years, and they stay very close to where they were once housed. We need to prioritize housing with services and give people an actual blueprint of how we're going to take care of them. People have been failed time and time again. But our council members who do prioritize housing as a human right in Council District Four have had a 30% reduction in homelessness, and in Council District 13 have had a 38% reduction in homelessness. I will prioritize that and make sure that we get the people the services that they deserve. Thank you.
The next question is directed first to Ms. Burgos. In July, Mayor Bass vetoed a proposed ballot measure, which would have expanded the powers of the police chief to fire officers outright for such misconduct as excessive force or abuse on duty, sexual misconduct and fraud, among other violations, saying that it would create, quote, "bureaucratic confusion," unquote, and result in, quote, "ambiguous direction and gaps," unquote. The city council declined to override her veto. Would you be in favor of resurrecting this proposal, and if so, what changes would you suggest to address her concerns? Ms. Burgos, your two-minute response, please.
I think it, you know, I think partly I agree with Karen, Mayor Karen Bass, on this, because it sets a dangerous precedent to allow a police chief to have that much power, the one person to have that much power. I think it needs to be, you know, a truly independent board that decides on whether somebody gets fired. But they should have no, no relationship, no current relationship with LAPD or police officers. They should be part of the community. So, to give them that much power, they could choose to ignore. And we've seen it in the past, where officers have not been charged, and, you know, they've been allowed to, they've been allowed more grace than they should have been for ending somebody's life in a, in a traffic stop. So, I think that, you know, basically, we could avoid a lot of this. We could avoid a lot of this police misconduct from LAPD by having unarmed crisis response, honestly, and making sure that we fund that and take police officers out of those situations and take them out of traffic stops and put them where they need to be. And that's actually solving crime. So, again, I think that she did that out of an abundance of caution to make sure that one person didn't have too much power.
Thank you. Mr. Nazarian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. First of all, I need to go back to the previous question. There was some wrong, erroneous information provided. Council District Two actually has the highest number of tiny homes in the entire city. That's why it's already housed a lot of people. I know this because I helped, working with Caltrans, securing the properties for the city to build on it. So, I'll leave that at that, and I'm happy to answer more thoroughly about that. Two, just this morning, Two, uh, just this morning, Police Chief Choi, interim police chief, reversed a decision that was made to clear an officer from shooting an individual who was found, uh, uh, unresponsive in their vehicle, but with a gun in their hand. I don't, we don't know all the details of these circumstances, so it's one thing to sit up here and talk about it. It's another thing to hear the exact assessments of what happens. What are the legal issues that are also coming about? Thank you.
Next question is directed first to Mr. Nazarian. The Valley is feeling the effects of climate change in a big way. What measures would you propose to mitigate the immediate impact on vulnerable populations? And what can be done long-term to address this growing problem? Mr. Nazarian, your two-minute response, please.
Thank you. And climate change is a global issue that requires all nations to step up and do their part. And our federal government especially to step up and do its part. At the city level, our Department of Sanitation, our water and power are already taking steps. We're on our way to potentially providing an electrical grid that's gonna be a hundred percent carbon-free. I'm gonna continue supporting that and do everything I can to even expedite that timeline. We're investing in our water infrastructure so that we reduce inefficiencies in our water systems. We have water pipes in the San Fernando Valley that have between, that are as old as almost a hundred and forty years old. So you can just imagine, we're one major seismic or earthquake away from being left waterless or, and/or wasting quite a bit of clean water. And obviously, as we're gonna be building up, because we need to meet the demand of residential needs and cost of living, we are gonna need to build up. But as we're building up, it's gonna be critical for us to maintain open space. That's something that I fought for and I will continue fighting for. Open space is extremely essential to the mental health, to the recreational activity, and to raising healthy children. And I want Los Angeles to be a place that attracts young families. So investing in open spaces is gonna be critical in our continuous efforts towards climate change.
Thank you. Ms. Burgos, your one-minute response, please.
I definitely support the electrification of our city, starting with apartments, making sure we remove gas stoves. It also causes twenty-five percent of asthma. We need to electrify our buses, fleets, and our cars and make sure that we keep an electrical grid that can support all of this. I also am a proponent for planting more trees. I believe that we are really park-starved here in the valley. And it's really hot out here, it's a hundred degrees this past couple weeks in October. We have to do something about that, we need to create more green spaces, community gardens, and use recycled water to help with that. We also need to implement cool streets when repaving and that solar reflective coating, so that will help to bounce off some of the heat. We also need to encourage homeowners and landlords to paint their roofs white. I got that from, um, former council member Ruth Galanter. And that's gonna help to also cool, um, cool our homes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I now have questions we've received from the audience. The first one. Curbs are damaged all over the city, making it difficult for the mobility impaired. Despite resident complaints, this persists. What are your plans to address street access and maintenance? Ms. Burgos, your two-minute response, please.
I love this question because there is very inconsistent sidewalks and curbs in District Two, all throughout it. I have a friend who is disabled, and we tried to take a walk to our local cafe, and he couldn't get through because there was no curb on half of the sidewalk for him to, to get down on a ramp way to get there. So we had to walk all the way around. It was very, uh, very inconvenient for him. We need to make sure that our communities are ADA compliant so that people who are disabled or people who may have mobility issues can enjoy our neighborhoods and get from point A to point B without the use of a car. I think that, you know, I, I really advocated in the primary for Measure HLA. We need to make sure that, uh, our streets are repaved correctly and have, you know, curb bulbouts, different, different calming and slowing measures. And, uh, basically that one side of the neighborhood may have a sidewalk, the other side deserves that same access too. So we need to have equal access for everybody and make sure that our neighborhoods are enjoyable for everyone. And also expediting the fixing of curbs, cracked streets, potholes. These are basic services that we deserve. And currently, uh, we are paying more and getting less services. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nazarian, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you for that question. First of all, the city, uh, received quite a bit of federal funding in ADA-related lawsuits from several decades ago. So there are funds available, uh, and there are ongoing federal funds available for us to make the, uh, necessary improvements to sidewalks and to curbs. But that's not enough because we, there are, there's significant demand. When you're talking about a city that's spanning over four hundred and, four hundred square miles, that is a lot of coverage, a lot of sidewalk and curb to cover. And so one of the things that we need to be doing is partnering up with our developers. As we're doing work in specific areas and communities in building up housing, we need to make sure that the sidewalk and curb infrastructure is also improved. When we're making improvements to transportation for, for H, under HLA, we also need to take advantage of that and make those improvements.
Next question, and the last question, is directed first to Mr. Nazarian. What are your plans to support underfunded, non-charter public schools? Mr. Nazarian, your two-minute response, please. Again? Un- under, underfunded, non-charter public schools.
District schools. You know, I'm not supportive of charter schools. The idea of charter schools was to provide specific services and specific focus areas that the school districts were not providing. So if, for example, there's a certain region that has Iranian community growth, Armenian community growth, Korean community growth, there would be specific languages in those schools provided in order to benefit that community. That was the concept of charter schools. It was to meet the need that may not necessarily be necessary for the entirety of the district, but in specific focus areas. Well, business, private sector, lot saw, uh, saw charter schools as an avenue of defunding public education and public schools and instead taking advantage of the funding and putting it to use the way they wanna do it, they would, the way they wanna implement it. And that's what's been happening for a very long time. CMOs, charter management organizations, will move into a district and overnight establish twenty or so different charter schools. I've taken steps against that because I think that has taken funding away from our schools and it's destroyed our district schools, it's created a challenge for them. And when you look at what the mandate is for district schools, it's to provide education for all students with all different needs. Charter schools pick and choose which students they wanna provide education for. So there's a lot of inequities with charters, and I have taken steps to curb them when I was in the legislature. I will continue to do so in whatever capacity that I'm in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burgos, your one-minute response, please.
Thank you. So City Council doesn't have a whole lot to do with funding the L.A. USD school system, but we can support, um, we can support our partners that are on the school board. And I definitely am supportive of public schools, I am a product of the public school system. And I think that we need to stop charter schools from taking over, like, different rooms. One of my, um, future constituents had, I, um, from the neighborhood council, sorry, had a child whose music room and whose community room was taken away for a charter school. So literally, certain rooms are off-limits in these schools right now because they're going to a charter school. A lot of these schools are huge lots of land. There's no reason that we have to share that with a different school. I think if charter schools wanna be funded, they should be privatized and they should, the parents should pay for that, that shouldn't come from public school funding.
Thank you. That concludes the question period. Now each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. Ms. Burgos, your two-minute closing statement, please.
I wanted to say thank you so much for having me here today. It's really great to see all of the students here, you are the future. And I hope that you all will vote. As someone who is part of the community, who has been a lifelong renter, who has been an essential worker, I'm also a small-business owner of a theater company. I support the right for people to have housing, regardless of your ability to pay. I support workers, I was on the strike lines all through twenty-twenty-three when the top three of the five employers were all on strike, all at the same time. Our city council has so much power, and we need to, as a city council, push to fund people. Do we spend money on police helicopters or do we feed seniors meals? City council decides that. Do we empower corporate landlords to keep fueling this eviction crisis? Or do we protect renters? Our city council decides that. I am the only true grassroots progressive candidate who's not taking any corporate donations whatsoever. That is on purpose because I only wanna be beholden to you, to the people of our district. I came to this work because of housing inequality, because I've lost family members due to the failures of our government. I am you, I am part of you, and it is time for us to stop choosing corporate politicians and for us to choose ourselves. We deserve better, we deserve a city council that works for us. And we just have to stop the corruption at all, at all costs. Tell the status quo that their time is over. And the establishment, they're scared of me, that's why they are fighting me tooth and nail because I will always work for you. My, all of my solutions are people-powered, are people-sourced. They will always have you in consideration and your families and your future. I hope, uh, that you'll join us, you'll join our people-powered revolution, you'll come out and canvass with me because you know what, every single vote matters. And every local election matters even more because it affects your daily life. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Nazarian, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you, Rita. And thank you to the, to Pierce College, to the faculty, to AFT, to the Pierce Democrats sitting in the back, and to the Associated Student Organization for hosting this. Very much grateful and I very much appreciate this. Thank you also to Jillian for joining and participating in this process. I gotta give a quick shout-out, I was very impressed by Emily, who was speaking on the ballot propositions right before our debate started. So thank you for your work on that as well. Folks, I bring focus, energy, direction, uh, experience, and integrity to this job. I've been doing this, I've been a student of government and politics because I know what it's like to be treated unjustly. My family has moved four times just in the last hundred years roughly, whether because of a genocide, because of revolutions, wars, Stalinist purges. That's been my family history. So the reason why I do this is because I don't wanna move again, I don't want my kids being uprooted again. I don't want there to be family separation. We have it, we have an amazing country. It has its faults, but we need to make it better. We need to make it stronger, we need to make it vibrant. It only has a history of roughly three hundred years. It's a baby compared to the rest of the world. We gotta do work. And work, it doesn't mean just burning down the house when you don't like something or talking about defunding. I've been in a situation where I did not have police officers to protect me. And we were a Christian minority family when the Muslim, when the, unfortunately, the, the Iranian regime, the, the, um, fundamentalist regime in Iran took over. It's very scary to be a minority and not to be protected.
Thank you, Mr. Nazarian.
Thank you.
And thank the audience for your quiet attention. This concludes our forum for City Council Second District. We invite you to visit votefouroneone.org for information on the upcoming election, November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you, and I believe, uh, Alex, we'll, I'll be turning it back over to Alex.
Hey, just a few, uh, quick announcements, so we're gonna have lunch now. Yeah, oh yeah, thank you so much to Mr. Nazarian and Ms. Burgos. And, um, thank you to Pierce College and League of Women Voters and everyone for putting this on. So we're gonna have lunch now and then at, um, twelve-thirty, we're gonna have a, you heard about it a little bit in this forum, but we're gonna have a deep dive on rent control with, um, someone from Yes on Prop Thirty-three and someone from Howard, the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association. So, um, that one's definitely gonna be great at twelve-thirty. Um, and then we have lunch right over here, uh, for now.